All right, awesome. So it's 7:01. I'll call the meeting to order for the Lake Love Public Library Meeting. Turn it over to trustee Friedman for roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Here.
Trustee Graziano.
We'll vote on that.
Um, trustee Hayes.
Here.
Trustee Friedman. Here. Um, trustees Jardine and Zadi are absent today.
Okay. Um, so can we at this point?
Yes.
At this point, we do have trustee Graziano in the meeting. We have a physical quorum, which is awesome. So we can vote to permit trustee Graziano to participate remotely. Unfortunately, her babysitter canceled the last, so she's not able to be here. Um. Vote, 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 okay?
Yeah, we need a motion and then votes.
Okay, so I'm open to a motion to vote on trustee Graziano's participation.
I so moved.
Thank you, trustee Church. Thank you, trustee Zadi. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed. Stain. Hi Jenny, you're officially.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Can we just turn up all the way on the speakers and the computer? Thank you.
You can hear us, okay Jenny?
Yes, I can hear you. Great.
Okay, you're just a little faint for us, so we're adjusting our speaker volumes.
Oh, thank.
It also might be the laptop, because sometimes the setting on the laptop is not as loud as it can be.
I've got the volume all the way up on the laptop.
All right, I invite everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic.
Thank you.
Right. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have one correction, and it's just that the Bylaws Committee did not be in the agenda.
Oh, I moved it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I have one also, and the Browns Committee did not.
Thank you.
Sounds like a shorter committee report to me. All right. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, so we'll make those corrections. Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board? There's no one physically present. Is there anyone online?
We're just looking for a note. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We come to approval of board meeting minutes from the October 17th regular board meeting. Thank you. Trustee Church, you put these together?
Jenny did.
Jenny did. I was gonna say, this is not your normal, um, format. Yeah, no, I actually had to be you. That's right. Thank you so much for doing that. I'm sure nervous. That's right. Um, and the notes look very thorough. Thank you Jenny for those.
Oh, you're welcome.
Any corrections to the minutes?
Um, I have a best meeting, so is Katie, but you're virtual.
Okay, so we have a correction on the attendees. Martha's. And Katie, you were also getting dialed in?
Yeah.
All three of them done virtually.
Virtually.
We didn't have anybody.
Jill was here.
Okay, I remember.
All right.
All right. So.
Any other corrections or comments on the minutes from last month's meeting? Okay, hearing none, open to a motion to approve the minutes.
I so moved.
Thank you, trustee Church. A second?
Sorry.
Thank you, trustee Zadi. Um, this is a roll call vote.
Trustee Shaw.
I will abstain. I was not at the meeting.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
See Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Dadi. Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Friedman. I also abstained. I was not in attendance.
All right, move right along. Item number seven, library directors' updates.
Well, October was another busy month for the library. And the first item I wanted just to state publicly is that in October, there was a suspect that was arrested for the string of bomb threats at local public libraries throughout the Chicagoland area. Um, information from the police report I included here in the board report, so you can identify that information. Um, and there have been no publicly stated or known threats to public libraries in the Chicagoland area since this news broke. Um, so I will say there is a, an air of relief amongst library staff across this state. Um, and especially our library. Um, this is, I think, just a testament to the inner jurisdictional team that helped. Um, it was just really, um, I'm really glad that we have the support of our local police. Um, and again, thanks to Police Chief Smazinski and his team, as well as the fire department, who have helped keep us up to date and trained us. Um, in fact, as of last month, we received a training on bomb threats and swatting here at the library. And we posted on our social media. Um, it was a great partnership and staff really had a lot of good questions. We learned a lot of important things. Um, and we couldn't do that without our local police department. So, thank you to them. Um, as I have for the last couple of months, I've just identified some additional information about um, our staffing situation. Um, we currently have one staff member on FMLA. Um, we did have to cancel six library programs, including a storytime. And I share this because storytime has such a following and um, trustee, trustee Jardine noted that a friend of hers reached out to her and commented about storytime being canceled and um, we, we have tried to work to avoid any cancellations, especially storytime, but we ran into a situation where there was nobody on staff to do that. And so um, in, as a result of this continued staffing shortage strain, I just want to commend the managers, especially Katie, who have implemented kind of a shift in the way that we're staffing. Um, the managers who are the PICs, the person in charge of the library, um, they do have regular desk shifts. And so, um, to free up their time to complete regular timely tasks, such as, you know, our weekly transmittal reports, various um, passport things that need to be timely responded to and submitted via mail. Um, you know, we have kind of an on-call situation right now. Um, it's not ideal, but it is working well enough. Um, but as that is, and we'll talk more staffing later, but I just wanted to acknowledge the continued support of every single staff member in the library, um, to keep the library open.
Awesome. Well, is there only one person on staff who can do the, the story?
No, um, I can, Eliza can. There was another staff member. All of us were out. You know? Um, other things, as my, you know, I'm not going to go over everything in here, but I do want to acknowledge that we have two brand new staff members. Um, their names are Gus and Robin. Um, we, uh, as a library, want to acknowledge and thank the finance committee for creating a new position for the library. Fifteen hour part-time librarian position, which allowed us to hire Gus, who has experience um, in local libraries and a recent graduate to school graduate. Um, and Robin also has a great resume of experience working at the Art Institute downtown as a volunteer. Um, and is an avid library user, and they are doing exceptionally well in their training. Katie has taken on training both at the same time. Um, and so uh, I'm very excited to have them as part of the team, um, to be working on the desk by the end of this month. That is the goal. For them to be able to be independently working and filling shifts by the end of this month. Yeah.
I'm sorry to jump in, but Eliza mentioned in the chat that there are actually, we have four staff members who can do.
Oh, I missed one.
And, and I think Vanessa.
Vanessa, thank you.
Regardless, everyone was either out or available.
Yes, thank you for that correction, Eliza. I appreciate it. Yes, absolutely. Um, we have a report from Katie later in the agenda about the IGA card. So I just want to acknowledge that all of the IGA cards and educator cards were finalized at, at the end of this month or October. Um, and we have promotion coming out in our winter newsletter about our IGA card program, which we're really excited about. And we'll continue, I think, with this promotion and with engagement with the school, see increased usage um, and applications through the program. Um, there continues to be a focus on staff training. Um, the management team started their eight-week management course training. It covers topics, everything from supervisory experience to conflict resolution to EDI to, I know many others, budgeting and others. So, uh, I'm really glad that we can have them attend. It's recorded, so they do have the flexibility of attending, not at the live hour. So um, that is especially helpful for us, given our current situation. We increased the number of passports this month from last month's to twenty-nine. Um, and so I'm glad to see that. I know um, the team is as well. Um, it is still a reduction from our regular passport completion rate. Um, we, right now, only have one person, um, taking on passports, and that is Katie. Um, and so we are going to be increasing that in time as capacity allows. Um. The rest of the, my actual director's report, I'm happy to answer any questions, but what I'd love to do is take time to share what I put together, which is a special report about banned books week um, October, and actually even the end of September. And since we saw the fall newsletter be distributed out to the Lake Love community, we've been engaging with the community in many ways about banned books week, intellectual freedom, the freedom to read and censorship. And so this report highlights, um, the goals that we had with this initiative. It crossed um, programming, communications, um, you know, and our services, we had some drop-in activities for people to participate. Um, and I know that I shared a lot of this already as we were heading into banned books week, but one thing I'd like to highlight is that we had a raffle. We encouraged people to come in or participate online in a raffle. And what we wanted to do was engage people about their favorite banned book. And so the four bullet points you see, um, kind of middle, middle of the page are actual quotes from Lake Love residents about why they love this banned book. Um, and the one I wanted to read in particular, um, was Almost Perfect by Brian Katcher. Um, uh, which is a book specifically about, um, mental health and also LGBTQIA identities. And the person who wrote this said, "It helped open my eyes to the journey my son was on to discover himself. It was a refreshing take on love, providing hope that love can still win." And I think it's a beautiful way to engage our community, to see how books impact them um, and the power books have across all topics. Um, and so we received so much community support. It was really overwhelming. There was more than I could even include in this report. Um, and this is really just the highlights. We received written comments, emails to our reference email, in-person conversations, engaging people in the topic, surprised to see some of the statistics going on. Um, I think it was an overwhelming success, and I heralded the communications team and the staff who put together all of the various aspects of this initiative. Um, and so I wanted to just share that and say, um, Lake Love supports reading and Lake Love supports the freedom to read. At least that's been my observation because of this initiative, and I think that is, um, something to be really proud of as a Lake Love community. Um, I'm happy to answer any other questions about, um, the director's report at this time.
Did you get any negative feedback at all?
There is a letter in the correspondence. Um, that is the only piece of, of different feedback that we received.
Was it about banned books or about something else?
The letter in correspondence was about banned books. This is the one where you were included in.
Okay, so, okay, so I, I I didn't frame that as about banned books as much as it was about.
The value of the library.
No. Um. It was about again, it's, it's been a few weeks since I read it, and it's in the packet, but in my opinion, it was about does the library act as a parent? And prevent a minor from taking up a book from the adult collection? That, in my mind, was what it was about, not so much about banned books. Because banned books are usual, I don't know, they're usually banned for children. Sometimes in some places, I think they're banned from library, you know what I mean? So anyway, my, my take on that letter was more about, does the library operate in this fashion? I guess it was about many things. There were four points in the letter. Again, it's been a while since I read it, but it's in your packet if you would like to read it.
So to, yeah, just reiterate your question, Janie, we did not interact with anyone at the desk, and I was incredibly attuned. As were the managers, as were the staff. Staff had talking points. Um, we discussed this at staff meetings ahead of time. How to, um, support the freedom of expression and disagreement of anybody who comes into the library who may not like us talking about banned books. So, um. Um, in terms of statistics, what I do want to highlight is, um, last month, the visit count was incorrectly recorded. So this month's visit count, October is correct, and I also adjusted September 2023. So the visit count, and we'll talk about visit count later when we talk about the Vaya software and the traffic, but, um, this is data from our old counter, and so it's been updated for your, um, recording. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Renee's director's report? Seeing none, we'll move to the committee reports. Um, we'll start with finance.
I'm going to, uh, also reference Jamie Rapun's, uh, slides that are in the board packet. Um. We had a presentation from Jamie Rapun, who's with a company, Maristem Advisors. They did a presentation, he did a presentation about um, his experiences with libraries and planning impacts of the community. Um, they work with helping libraries with budgeting, levies, feasibility studies, and directly kind of like SWOT analysis type work with, uh, all our different libraries that are surrounding. So there's a couple of slides in there to sort of show, it's sort of, it was educational for me and, uh, as far as where Lake Love rates with other libraries in the area. So the first slide shows um, tax rate versus peers and expenditures versus Canada. So, when you get your tax bill, you'll see a portion that is, that's going towards the library at a rate. And the Lake Love.
No, I'm sorry. Are you referring to this one? Okay, so it'll be, uh, this page in your packet.
I think it's not locked at page, it's down to seven, sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry? Yeah, we do have extras, yep.
Sorry Jenny. So after all, you guys are familiar with all the statistics reports, right? So it's the next page.
Actually, I jumped to, don't the third one, it's just a bit fun about. So that's what's marked as page in section eight. So one be, one be the one before that one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, got it. So, one we, we looked at is, um, where our fund balance is, and for, for us, the Lake Love, our fund balance is at four-twenty, and that's going to be at the end of the financial year twenty-two. We'll find out what's going on probably when we get the audit report, which is sometime next.
This week.
So, yeah. Um, and then based on our expenditures, our fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, thirty-nine point four. And, and since I've been on the board, the target has always been to get it to twenty-five to fifty in that, in that range. Uh, yeah. So in May, um, which is a sort of the low point before probably all the revenues and things start coming in, we were at thirty-one point one percent. And out of last year, we always have, uh, a goal to money from our operating budget. And we need to go that further to go into the, so, which is all in line. So, part of the presentation that Jamie did was, where do we stand from a benchmarking standpoint? Where do we stand with other libraries? So now, you go to the next page, which shows, um, uh, two graphs. The first one is the tax rate versus the peers. So this, um, for us, and I know on the, I've got it in black and white, but you've got it, you can see it, uh, I'll need to. Point two is the tax rate, uh, for every one hundred dollars of equalized annual value. And, and so Lake Love is one of those point twos. And then if you look there on, on, what, with an amount of twenty different libraries, they range from point two on the low side to point five-six on the high side. So, as a community, you know, our rate is, 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 is one of the lowest. Then, if you go to the next graph, this is a graph showing what your expenditures are. In our case, we're just, we're, we're probably just over a million dollars, a million six-six thousand. As a rate to where your equalized annual valuation is as a, as a town. And so for rounding up purposes, Lake Love is about six hundred million. I think that's the right number this day, really.
Yes, for you.
So, at six hundred million, and with an expenditure of one million dollars, again, we're in the bottom left quadrant. Um, if you, again, you can look at other towns that are in that six hundred million. And, and some of them have operating budgets, well, you know, anywhere from two to three billion. So there's a lot of ways you can look at the data, um, uh, on there, but, but again, it is, uh, a sort of a way of benchmarking as to where we are as compared to, to our peers. And then, the third, the next page after that is, is the library, is that, that the memo that Renee has. Again, it's got sort of more exact data, looking at municipal libraries, district libraries that are in the area. And, uh, you know, compared to where we are with our, again, peer groups. We look at Lake Forest, they're about, you know, a little over three, three and a half times where we are. Their, uh, operating fund balance is a lot bigger than ours. So, they're thirty-nine percent, we're, they're a hundred ninety-one percent, we're at thirty-nine percent. And Jamie's, um, position was such that, well, we're, we we're probably not, we're not where we should be, as, as far as we, when we compare ourselves to, to our peer group. Now, that's not to say that our target should be a hundred ninety-one percent. But we know that from our discussions, um, over the last year or so, that there's a lot of work to be done. You know, with the building, there's a lot of work that's got to be done with salaries and making sure you look at that staffing. And, um, we, you know, we, we've sort of worked on this benchmark of the twenty-five to fifty percent. So we want to sort of maybe expand kind of that out of to see where, where we, we could be. And again, data can be, you know, looked at in many different ways, but looked at a couple of different things, and we are on the, on the low end of, of all of these things. Um. The Okay, with, with Jamie gave his presentation, um, he had a lot of experience with a lot of other libraries, um, and uh, has worked with them. Um, he did, you know, did some work for us, I think, liked to sort of look at the, um, possibility of him doing small work for us. And helping us develop, um, where realistically we, we, we should be, the sort of, not going all the way to best in class, which would be a brand-new building, put up this, that and the other, but we, we've got to have something that we can strive to, what we want to, to look for. What, what should our library look like? What sort of things from a technology standpoint do we, do, do we have that we're missing and sort of work through there? And for, for him to sort of give us a, an overview of what that cost will be, and we can look at it, and sort of say, okay, let's move forward with a certain number of hours for him to, to show us, and give us a, an explanation of, of something that we can strive for. So if it's a good, better, best type scenario, where our best is not going to be, you know, a hundred ninety-one percent of a capital fund. But certainly, um, we know that there are things that, uh, we, we need to have. And, you know, the last thing is this, um, the is this the personal property tax replacement. So there, going back into the seventies, there, they, there was different things done such that the state of Illinois took over certain dispersions of monies that were previously controlled by local entities. And so then, they take care of that by then, uh, proportioning out that to the different places, the state of Illinois. So Cook County gets like fifty-two percent, and all the other counties in Illinois share a portion of it that goes to the village, and then they disperse that out. And so, I know there's, there's, there's work going on to sort of work with the village as to what portion of that should be coming to the library, what portion might have not been coming to the library, but should have been now again to the library. And that could be a way, working with the village, that we can kind of build our fund up. Because, you know, there are other buildings within the village here that get a lot of help, such as re-roofing and this, that and the other. And I think that we probably need to sort of sit down with them, sort of go over what our, uh, needs and wants are going to be, and tie that in then to the, uh, the capital improvement plan that we're working on with the, uh, uh, we're going to solve the cost. So that we know that, okay, we're going to have heating and ventilation and, uh, uh, that's going to come up. That's going to be, there's going to be top pointing, there's going to be this, that and the other. And so we've got a clear budget, instead of trying to take everything right out of our operating budget, which I think over the years, what we've sort of seen is that by, by doing that and building our own fund up out of our, our own operating, um, expenses, we, we've, we've probably missed, um, certain other things that, and this will be like a So, that was kind of a, a sort of an overview of what we, we, we talked about, what was presenting.
So I, I'd just like to add that. You know, I, I think that this provided important perspective, as Bill said, kind of, you know, for the past year and a half or whatever. Kind of been looking at the monthly expenditures for our library, and now to kind of zoom out and say, oh, wow, let's take a look at, you know, the tax rate that's generating the budget you get to work from. How that compares to twenty-four other libraries in the area. How your budget then compares to other libraries has been really kind of I, I think, super interesting, and it's important facts and figures, I think, for us to bring to the village and the discussions we have scheduled for PPRT. Think, well, no, we don't have that scheduled yet, but it drew and we just, we're, we're, we'll probably meet in the next thirty, thirty to forty-five days, I would say. Um. Information that we need to bring to the village and bring to the community as a whole, if we, to, to try to kind of change the, it's not even change the trajectory, it would be like a step change, potential improvement in the funding that we have for the library and, you know, the level of service and the, and the experience that we can give to people when they're in the building, when they're using our online collections, when they want to do a program, when they want more trivia nights, where they want more storytimes. We can actually get it done. And that means we And that means we. Thanks, Bill, for that recap. Any other, Matt, I mean, you were probably engaged in the finance committee meeting as well, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think those are, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I I think I I would. Ask the finance committee, perhaps it's the December meeting, not the meeting in two days, but the December where we say, okay, he made this recommendation. How do we recommend the board move forward?
Yeah, I mean, I think what I'd like to see is kind of a uh a proposal from from Jamie as to what. What that would entail, number of hours, and then we can look at that in December and say, yes, we'll we'll move forward. With all of what he's proposing, or part of what he's proposing, um for that then. He will will help us with our long range planning guides as well over the next few years, say, okay. Going from point A to point B, what steps can we look at, what can we reasonably assume that uh that timeframe?
Any other questions? The finance committee?
Do you want to provide an update on P P R T?
The only thing I was thinking about adding was, and I shared this with Bill when we met. I got an email from Drew saying he wants to talk to me and Bonnie with Regis about. I think the word he used was memorializing the payments, which tells me. There there are payments to be made. So the question that I had this whole time after going to Director's University was. Have we been missing out on dispersments of payments for this P P R T since the seventies? You know, other libraries have reported back saying that after Director's University, they brought this back to their library, talked to their village and. They were like, oh, for no fault of anybody's, but, you know, just missing it. There's this state statute that says the library, if the library existed at the time of the statute in the seventies. We are owed that percentage and that's compounded over the last fifty years. And so by him saying, we want to memorialize, you know, the payments in the process, that feels like we're in a good trajectory. Um I we're not going to know until we go to the meeting, um and so we're just going to go and listen. Um and see what they have to say, but. I I mean, I would love to be able to come back and report with Bonnie that here's the level of money that we are all of a sudden owed from the village. Because of just oversight, um that would be wonderful.
I can even walk, walk and memorialize it.
He referenced a contract or some sort of agreement. Um, I mean, the state statute says we are owed this money based on the percentage that the village set in the seventies. So it it makes sense that we have something to formalize the ongoing payments. Um if it, if we are eligible and it seems like we may be, then there may be payments that were missed.
It looks like the payments are made eight times a year, so it's not like a month length deal that goes.
To the village.
To the village, it looks like there's set months of the year that these payments go out. Um but it's.
Do we know anything about the size of the payments being made to the village?
I don't, um I just, it's all, I think, that when that meeting takes place, I think it will be, you know, I, you know, I don't think as to what uh it entails. And I mean, there's there's a number of options or ways to look at it. It's if it's money set aside so that all of the building equipment is can be taken care of. And then that comes off of our operating budget, but then these are things that are going to be happening based on 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 what we've got. Uh other money said that we can, you know, help the staff.
Right, seems like it's good news, but we'll report back.
Yeah, yeah. Um on on another quick note, I made I made this um. Update and this to our finance committee last month, the grant. For our library that was. Um there was a press release issued in July of twenty nineteen. I'm sure you wrote it. That the library was to receive a hundred thousand dollars from Illinois State. Um we've connected on that. Um Julie Morrison, our state senator, has given approval from the. Regulatory body of the state responsible for the grant to say you can dispense these funds like we can. We need to get moving on this grant. Basically, it needed a green light from her, she's given that.
I I received my emails to say, please register for this grant training. You are awarded this amount of money, my training is at the end of this month. I will attend the training to understand what our reporting requirements are for this grant. And then I will learn how that funding is dispersed.
Yep, yeah, more good news, yes, more good news, the P P R T potentially a good thing and.
I would just love to keep giving you all money. As I can find it.
Yeah. All right, anything else on finance? Okay, moving to H R committee, trustee Graziano, Chairperson Graziano.
Hi. Yes, thank you. So I did um I did report on um some of these things uh at our last meeting because our H R committee met on October third. Um so at our meeting, we discussed um the. The, sorry, the proposal that trustee Friedman is going to be discussing tonight regarding staff appreciation. Um we also discussed um the staff and trustee follow-up survey, and I want to thank everyone that participated in the survey. We had thirteen people participate, we got some positive feedback regarding our. Um six month review that we just worked with Renee on, um and then we also discussed um. Uh Renee's um goals that she's going to be presenting as well.
Thanks, Jenny.
Yes, thank.
Is the proposal a separate new business item or we're going to cover it now?
In light of the fact that I made a mistake on the agenda, I apologize, um it might make more sense in the new business. Um it doesn't require a vote, um but I think it might be best to move to new business.
Do we need to vote on moving it to new business or?
We didn't, we didn't vote on any of the edits, so we're okay, you can move it.
Okay, so we're moving that into new business, A, B, C, D, it'll be E.
So we'll just kind of highlight or bookmark the number ten section, we'll come back to it, Ally. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay, that leads us to our financial reports.
Well, I want to start by commending the staff. Um we are really on target for our spending and since the start of our new fiscal year, that is something that I've. Wanted to instill with the whole organization, but first we'll talk revenue. Um we are nearly ninety percent of property tax revenue received and dispersed, which is great. Um I wanted to highlight that we received our payment for the I G A program from District sixty five. Um that is of the fifteen hundred dollars that our contract currently stipulates for their contribution. Um and, you know, our interest continues to climb. Um and we are way ahead of our targets, which were already under, you know, we were kind of conservative in our interest targets. So um that's what I have for revenue. Um with regarding to expenditures, I just wanted to note a few things I'm noticing. Um our I M R F is a a little bit under uh spent, but. We were, I remember the finance committee meetings last year, we were unsure about how to budget for this, so. Um I I think that this is a good, it's a good trend, um if that means that we have unspent money. I have more information about how I can budget for it next year. Um the medical insurance, you will see that increase next month because we did finally get those invoices, so that's why that is underspent, but it shouldn't be. Um and uh other expenditures that I wanted to address, uh there is the um. A payment to Jamie Racklin for um his contract with us, we are not in contract with him officially. Um but he did put time in for that presentation, and so that's what the. Um two thousand one hundred eighty six is the work that he um put forth for that, and so you'll see that in the checks as well. Happy to answer any questions, um we are overall um very well spent for the year as end of October is the six month mark. So um we are fifty percent um to the end of the fiscal year, on target in a lot of ways. And those who are not on target, I've had conversations with managers, um and there's to have conversations with staff about um following up on spending targets for the fiscal year.
Hey, any questions on the monthly financials? There are no questions, I'm open to a motion to approve the monthly financials. I mean. Trustee Church, is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Bill Hayes for the second. Um this is a roll call vote since it's money.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano. Trustee Graziano.
I think she muted.
Jenny.
She's she's on the screen, she's um but her thing is muted.
Can we go back to her?
Yeah, trustee Dottie.
All right.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Friedman, hi. Trustee Graziano, can you hear us?
Yes, sorry, I couldn't unmute it, uh I.
Okay.
All right. Checks.
Um with regards to checks, there's the Meresum Advisors that Bill talked about, but the only other um thing I wanted to highlight is Rails. Um we have rejoined the Illinois Presents, Illinois Library Presents Consortium. Um to present programming, virtual programming to in-demand and high-impact um programming authors. So I'm very excited, we've been promoting that for the last several months, um so that's what that payment is to Rails. I'm happy to answer any questions on the checklist that you dispersment report that you have.
Hearing no questions, I'm open to a motion to approve the checks, please state the check number, any motion?
A motion to approve the uh monthly check dispersment.
Thank you, trustee Hayes, second.
Second.
Trustee Church, thank you, this will be a roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
I.
Trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Dottie. Or trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Friedman, I.
All right, thank you. Um before we move on, there was a quick financial thing I wanted to mention, oh, I didn't see here on my agenda anything about the foundation.
It didn't even know, um we wanted to have that as a, any and all other business. I was going to see that for anything.
Nice, since I brought it up, I'll just quickly go.
Yeah, yeah, so we did the intergovernmental, didn't we, needs and the foundations of me.
I see, I see, okay, um. Just 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 quickly, um. About two weeks ago, three weeks ago, two to three weeks ago, um I received an email from Kathy Meyerhoff. Um she had spoken to Renee in person prior to sending a note. Um that she has decided to step down from uh her leadership role as president of the foundation. Due to a, from the get-go, Kathy had said, I'm going to give this a year, I'm going to give this a year and see how it goes. Um I think she has, there was some difficulty kind of getting traction to do some events that she had thought would would be beneficial and we, Renee and I did meet with her. Um and um so she has decided to step down from the uh organization. Both trustee Church and former trustee John Henselman um sat on the foundation, naturally she identified them as well. Um so just uh. Wanted to share this with the board in transparency, um as many of you know, the Friends organization has uh done fundraising for sort of um. Non-capital equipment, um whereas the foundation established just before COVID. Um really kind of struggled um and um. Hired a couple individuals to try to help get off the ground with fundraising efforts. Those were not fruitful, and at this point, um you know, Kathy's kind of said. Not a great fit for her skill set and, you know, how she wants to enjoy her life post. Being on the board and and in her retirement with her family, so um you know, naturally. Kathy served the board and the foundation, and as she explained it, the foundation was sort of. I think uh an idea and an effort and priority that the board at the time wanted to create, got it created, et cetera, um. And unfortunately, I think. COVID sort of prevented any real momentum from happening with that organization, so.
I would like to point out, uh I I think what you did, what you just said was a very accurate representation of of what has occurred. But I do want to say that um. It it did result in the struggle, so I I can't say it was totally without success.
True, yes, thank you.
Success, uh and there there still is money um in the foundation um bank accounts. It was just a matter of us all figuring out what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Is the foundation going to continue?
I really can't, no decision has been made yet, but I I honestly can't see it happening. Neither John or I want to step up and be resident and um. I I think that it it it's. Oh, I don't know, hey, you you probably read the letter I wrote, should the email that I, did you see that?
I don't know, that you wrote?
That I wrote uh in response, I thought I had sent it to you too, when Kathy said she was stepping down, um. And I can't remember what the context was, I'll have to look through my.
Yeah, I don't.
See, see what it was, but I I think that there has always been a confusion. Between the purpose of the foundation and purpose of the Friends and that they're even separate organizations and. You know, I I know there has been confusion on the card of donors as to what what group they're giving money to and so on and so forth. The Friends are well-established, we did try to merge with the Friends, that didn't happen. Um I I just personally feel very strongly that we need to. This this is not. We we need to increase our fund date. And it is not an appropriate effort in this time and place for a private fundraising entity. I really think that we can do a little test here. And have this be a community-wide effort. To increase our funding. Actually, so, R E F B R. Absolutely. Feel we need to do that, assuming.
Yeah, Dr. Bill's question, um has there been thought about if the foundation does choose to not continue making? If there is money they'd like to disperse to either the library or the Friends as a recipient?
Right, right, one of those two things.
So it sounds like those, once those decisions are made.
My feeling is that's where it's going to go.
I may need to confirm with our lawyer, but my understanding is it would go to the the library as an organization and the board would determine the dispersment. I don't, I it may be that the Friends could be the recipient, but my understanding is it would go to the library. Um so obviously, at that point, we would make sure we handle everything, you know, legally, but.
Yeah, so. It's not all tied up in a boat yet, but I didn't want people to maybe hear about it out in the community or whatever. And I um did tell Kathy when I um, you know, thanked her for her note and her service, that I would share it with the rest of the board.
Did tell Kathy when I, you know, thanked her for her note and her service, that I would share it with the rest of the board. Some people know naturally, it's something. Okay. New business. So this. Agenda item was on the agenda last month. The board moved or decided to. Take a little more time to think about the proposed, the proposed pilot to change the library's course, so. As Renee and I have talked about this, and I'll tell you that based on. Our our amount of staff hours available, the amount of hours we're open. When I realized that these things were not really supporting each other. That we had too many hours and not enough people to provide hours. I had said to Renee. Maybe we should consider modifying our hours.
And that's in my presentation.
Okay, okay. And I will also, I will also tell you that Renee. Almost went like this. But you know, looking at it like a business person, I'm like, well. Budget, supply, demand, where where do we find, where do we find how all these things kind of line up, right? And so Renee's gonna provide a couple additional opening comments, I think Jenny is too, and eventually we're gonna get to this lovely colorful heat map. That's it. To introduce the topic.
That was a perfect setup. Thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
And so first I just want to thank all of you as trustees for considering this proposed pilot. You know, I firmly believe public libraries exist to provide access, so any decision. That in any way limits or changes access is one that should not be made lightly. And I do not take this proposal pilot lightly. I think this operational decision requires a lot of data and multiple perspectives, which I'm confident. With the data I'm gonna present to you tonight and the statements that Martha and Katie will be making. Hopefully you will have a variety of information to make this informed decision. So. Because this is recorded and there may be interest of the community and the public in why this decision has been made or why the proposed pilot. Is being presented, I want to present an overview briefly of how we got to where we are today. For anyone tuning in live and also we're watching the recording, we do have people watching our recordings. So the topic of staffing has really come up to me since I started my tenure here. In fact, even before, when I interviewed with staff, I remember asking the managers. What is the most significant challenge you have here at the organization? And the response was from the management team, staffing, keeping the library open and burnout. And so early on, I remember having conversations with Bonnie, looping into what she was saying. Bonnie was the first person to in fact suggest that we adjust our hour changes. To more effectively reflect our staffing. And I admit, when she suggested this, I was not in favor of this option. I really wasn't. As a librarian, I believe firmly we are here to improve access. And not restrict hours and it felt counterintuitive for me as a mission of a library, right? And maybe some of you feel this way. Also, this is a North Shore library. We have North Shore expectations from our community. Our North Shore libraries in many ways have expanded hours. The Glencoe Public Library started opening their Sundays again. So they are no longer closed over the summers. They open Sundays all year long. So there is, you know, community in our peers to have expanded hours. But you know, looking back now on what I've experienced these last ten, eleven months, I do feel like. That reaction was just not informed by a broader, bigger picture. And it wasn't including. Informations of operations such as traffic patterns of our library, which I'm glad to present to you tonight. An evaluation of our staffing model, which predominantly our staff is is carried by part-time positions. We have sixteen part-time staff and six full-time staff. So you know, I started to observe, as you all did, straining of our staffing. We've had significant turnover this year, part-timers getting full-time jobs, retirements. And this continued to happen through critical staffing needs in the fall, which you know, I would report back here to you as a board. With our average number of leave hours per month and how those significantly increased month to month. Last month alone, we had to cancel six programs and that is not something I take lightly either. And I really am looking for a sustainable option for our operations. So you know, as you know, I've been sharing updated information with you all each month. I investigated library hours of operation compared to other libraries. There is no other library that really compares to us in budget, in staffing. But in using one, looking at the Glencoe Public Library, I identified that they were open approximately sixty-nine hours a week. We are open currently sixty-three hours a week. Their FTE, full-time equivalent, is twenty-seven. Our FTE is twelve point five. So we have been struggling for a long time with our twelve point five FTE. To try to keep open as long as another organization with twenty-seven FTE. Thankfully, we have new equipment to give us data, you know, nonjudgmental, black and white data. So we can look at some of the traffic patterns and I'll go over that. And so finally, I'll just end with saying, I really, as director, want to ensure our library is positioned in the best place possible. To provide the most excellent customer service. That's something we have a reputation of. Not just our community, but other communities as well come here because of our customer service. I want to ensure the safety of children who visit our library by providing staffing at our youth desks. At all hours of operation and not putting up a sign to have people go upstairs. I want the library to uphold a level of fiduciary responsibility that responds to the demonstrated needs and usage of the library. I want the library to provide programming as we do that is in demand of the community and I don't want to have to cancel programming again. And so in order to do that, I feel the necessary operational change is a pilot of new hours. To reflect our unique staffing models here and so that we can more effectively support the needs of community.
And and if I can also add something here, Renee. You know, our most expensive expense is staff. And I. You know, we are charged to be. Responsible for the financial monies we get from our community. And you know, when I look at this heat map, which Renee will explain for everyone, I just feel like. It's not the best use of our library budget or community's dollars. To be open for two people. Especially when our collection. Is available twenty-four seven. So I feel that there's also some. You know, some some indication, people vote with their feet, right? Are they in the building? Do they want the building? Someone I know used to say that at work all the time. People vote with their feet. If they show up for the meeting, it's important, right? We don't have a lot of feet coming in the buildings, certain hours of certain days and certain days in general. So I I. I thank Renee for, you know, considering an option. Again. We would communicate, i- if this is approved, we're, it's it's a pilot. We can evaluate it. We can request feedback from the community. Through multiple means of communication, Facebook, Instagram, comment cards, emails from our website, et cetera. You know, there's, there's no reason why we couldn't shift back and just pilot this. In our community, our swimming pool changes its hours as demand goes down. It changes its hours when it's raining or it's lightning. Our golf course changes its hours based on daylight. You know, so. I I see those as proxies for demand.
I'd be, thank you. I'd be glad to walk you through the data, what you have in front of you. So. First, you have the actual proposal, a comparison between our current hours and our, the management team and my proposed weekly hours of operation. What this change allows us to do is put Sunday hours worked by staff back into the work week. Expanding our pool of available staff and hours in the hours of operation during the work week. It also financially reduces the. The strain of Sunday hours. Our personnel policy is paid at time and half. We need four staff to work the building on Sundays. And so by closing Sundays. That time is put back into the work week and all of that work time is paid at regular hours. Other aspects of this proposal. The management team and I had lots of discussions about what evenings and making sure we were open meetings, evenings. Our adult programming needs are evenings. That's when our adults come to programs. And so making sure that we are open through the evenings is really important. Consistency, making sure that we're open the same time every day, so it's not just messaging, but. We have a regular group of families and patrons that use the library every day in the morning and we'll come to some of the data soon. Other factors we were looking at was traffic, so let me go through the two maps or the two charts that you have in front of you of the data. The first one I'm gonna cover is this one. So this is. This is a look at the data from the inception of the installation of the equipment. So we have this new software called VEA and we have a new door counter that not only. Tracks people, but that's what this, that's what this graph is first, the total number of people per day. So you can see just by looking at the trends in the graph, the lowest days are your Sundays. And even this graph alone, I think is enough. Data to inform a decision about potential closing on Sundays. But what's even more interesting is this heat map that Bonnie was talking about. At the finance committee last month, I shared a copy of this with the data that I had. At that point, I only had one week's worth of data. This heat map is an aggregate, an average across all of the traffic, all of the hours of operation since. October twelfth to today, when I ran this report at five. And so the number, the time of day at the top identifies the hours that were open. And then on the left is going to be, the rows are going to be your days of the week. And so this is what's really interesting to me to inform some of our decisions about evenings. If you look at the columns five PM and six PM. In the heat map, that is where you see the numbers starting to drop. And even moving into six, seven, eight, and these are, these are averages across several weeks of data that I have already. There are zeros. We don't have anyone coming into the library during this time. We serve a variety of diverse audiences. We do need to be open in the evenings and so the proposed schedule is. We have staff to staff the proposed evenings in the schedule. Other information I wanted to address is that this schedule addresses pressure points in the schedule. So Fridays were currently open till six, but that requires us to stagger our staffing. So that we not only have people who work nine to five, but also ten to six or the afternoon people who work. Just a shorter part-time hours at six. And that continues as I've been here, that six o'clock hour, the five to six is not only. From data, a low traffic point is also very difficult for our staffing when we are trying to work with our weekly schedule. So. Those are the two pieces of essentially graphs that I wanted to share here. This is only one month's worth of data. But the last thing I want to share is that this data is incredibly accurate. It is much more accurate and sophisticated than our current, than our old model of our door counter. And the reason I know that is because if you look at our monthly visit count. Like going back from earlier in the board packet and you look at three thousand, four thousand, that's a lot of people walking through our building. That does not, is not reflected here. That old model was literally just a laser across a certain amount of space. I don't know how well it was functioning. It was a very old, I'm just identifying some of the the data points that may be. May have been incorrect over the last several years of reporting. So now we have data that is much more sophisticated, that is much more accurate, that I think can inform the board in making decisions. So at that point.
I do have a question about the data collection. When an employee, this this takes place at the doors into the library.
Correct.
The faster fuel rate. So if if you're going, say, back or between your office. This library is counter every time.
It does, because it's forward motion and also the other is true that we don't have any data collection at the elevator. For all those families that come straight to the elevator and go downstairs. So at some point, if we want to, we could consider adding an additional data trapper there. Sometimes what happens is families will come up the stairs, but not always if they're bringing their strollers. They're just going straight to the elevator and down then straight back up again. So we'd never count that, that motion, that movement. Unless they're coming back into the library space to check out.
Right, okay, so there's, yeah, there's compensation.
And the software is smart enough to know the direction of the entry, so it has separate numbers for ins and outs. The other model was literally just a number and we would subtract, yes. So if there was a cart there, if someone stood there for a few extra seconds, we don't know how that would read. I think the trends are gonna be the same, but I think the overall number of people in building, now that we have this, you're gonna see the visit count be different. So I just want to highlight. So that is my presentation. I know we have others, but yes.
So on the current weekday operation, it's got the Sundays, one to five, Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Yes, we are currently open.
So we're open after Labor Day.
Labor Day through. Sorry, did I mistype this? I did it the other.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Yeah.
Okay, that's that's what.
You're absolutely correct, I apologize.
That's okay. We're open now, then just just on the, just picking a few data.
Yes, let's do that.
So if we were, when you look at a a time slot, just say like Monday at three o'clock, it's got twenty-one. Does that mean that on average there's twenty-one people here during that hour?
No, it's it's not building capacity. It's people that have walked through. So we've had twenty-one people enter into the library during that hour.
On average, for the last.
Correct, the last four weeks.
Correct. Bet those twenty-one could stay and another twenty-nine.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so this is not building occupancy.
Does the technology we installed recently have the ability to detect exits?
Yes, yes, this is just in data.
Yes, it does. It is collecting.
Oh, yes.
It's curious.
Yep, absolutely. And I've been monitoring that kind of day-to-day just to kind of see what our differential is. And there's a slight differential, but it's nothing. Like statistically.
Right, so any any entries prior to nine AM are really staff or contracted services?
Prior to ten.
I'm sorry, like in the nine o'clock, in that nine o'clock row. Inclusive of the nine o'clock row and to the left.
Correct.
That's all like staff and contracting services. And then just for the weekdays, because right now, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We're open till.
Nine.
Nine, so those are exits, beginning with the nine PM column and to the right, those are, you know, staff.
All of this is in data. All of this is in data.
No, really.
Oh, okay, so somebody's, somebody's coming in after nine.
Right, so this could be museum, this could be cleaning crew.
Okay.
Or it's probably as we lock the building at nine.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And obviously, technology is not perfect. There could be an anomaly and so, you know, as I'm interested in this for people, for people that on Mondays at eleven. On Mondays at eleven P M, I want to investigate that. I don't know how long they stay, but yeah, that was Monday and they had a bigger crew because it's detail cleaning and, yeah, that's exactly it.
A quick question, because I know we've had one piece of written feedback about hours, which was someone requesting earlier opening time.
We've had more than one written and I've had conversations with people for more hours too.
Um, and perhaps since we have pretty good data on evenings. Um, has there been consideration to the earlier based on that community feedback?
Um.
Or are there constraints around that stats and lines that would?
I think a change in the early hours would affect availability. I mean, I know it will. It will affect availability for afternoon and evening. Um, currently, we open at ten, staff stagger either at a nine or a ten start. Um, and there would be elements of that where we'd have to open, we staff would have to be here as early as eight thirty. Um, just as I've staffed other libraries, you know, oftentimes it's a come in at eight thirty, get the library ready. It takes approximately half hour or fifteen minutes to get the building ready to go. Um. Anything is on the table for me to consider for operations. I think right now it's a conversation of our current staffing levels, our current hours and how those don't balance.
I remember when we were only open in the evenings on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And I, I, I just wish I could remember when it was we made the decision to open on Monday and Wednesdays as well.
So um, Martha and Katie have some of that anecdotal information in their statements.
You know, that, that particular day was before I started working, two thousand twenty seventeen, it was twenty sixteen, it sounds like, right? Yeah.
That's when it every day opened until.
That's when we went from only two meetings a week to everything. Yeah, yeah, but as far as I, I know, I mean, it, the Sunday hours during the school year. Have always been, it's always been open and I understand, I, I guess I didn't realize that.
That's our personnel policy that is board approved.
For that time.
Um, given that this proposal, is there, has there been thought, and thank you for including the. Like the letter, a draft letter they.
Oh, yes, that's.
For potential persons in the community, um, thinking about having some sort of planned evaluation point. That can be clear to the community to provide feedback. So like these, if this were passed. Please look out for a six month, you know, in June and December in which, you know. Or whatever the timing may be for cadence reward approval for um, twenty twenty five. To let people know that this is a pilot with opportunity for feedback.
And I think that's why that last paragraph was so important for me to include. Because given that this is a proposed pilot, we need to meet the needs of the community and there, and we do want to hear that. And so in all, we, if this were to move forward tonight. The, the plan is to develop a very strategic communication plan and I can share that updates with the board. Normally, that's very operational. But obviously, the board would want to know how we're in, in soliciting feedback from the community. One of my fellow librarians does a fireside right with the director once a month on Fridays. And I really love the conversational aspect of that. Some people really.
Invite the community to come in.
Yeah, any, for any topic, um, we could have online surveys. We, of course, are getting a lot of feedback in our comment cards. We can do um, a very targeted communication plan that is, you know, fill out this form about. Our hour change or our pilot. Um, so yes, all of that is on the table.
I, I also would welcome recommendations from the board on how long do we want to run the pilot? And what, what do we want to put a line in the sand in terms of when we want our valuing council?
Or if there is seasonal consideration, is the same way that there are in the. Sunday hour, have been, Sunday hour, you know, this one, like. You know, there's a variation to winter hours versus, you know, and maybe that's getting too complex for a pilot. But having, you know, some of the nature of school going back, it's all those things uh, that impact traffic in the library.
I think one of the, the best steps forward we've made is just having this conversation and providing a time. For evaluation of data. Based on what you'll hear from Katie and Martha, that has not happened in the past. Decisions about operating hours have not been informed by data. Um, or more broader perspectives of the various perspectives. So obviously, tonight, there are a lot of different perspectives and. Um, I'm really glad that we have something now that provides us with a level of, of detail. That can help us understand how our building is used. Um. Library is place as much as it is more than just books. Our library building is very much a place in the center of town that um, people want to come to. And so that in and of itself is, is very important to make sure that it's utilized well.
Just one thing on the Sunday data.
Yes.
And, and I know these, these represent the low numbers, but you were running, you were only open four hours during that time versus. And that one data point at one o'clock, uh, with twenty five, is there something that goes on at one o'clock?
We open the building.
And, but I mean, it's, it seems like a bit of rush that's sort of.
Ready to go.
Yeah.
And that's true in the mornings during the weekday too. I have people with strollers waiting for the door to open Monday through Friday.
I, I, I also see that. And some of the counterbalance for me about that data point on Sunday is. We are closed on Sunday during the summer. I have yet to hear a comment card. Hey, I wish you were open on Sundays in the summer. So I, I, I think the community is kind of flexible enough to be like, oh, okay. Again, we're, the suggestion is to begin the pilot January first, we would notify people um, with the next newsletter. There's a draft of the Renee's letter in your packet. Um, I would, I would think that the, the community would be resilient around Sundays. Um, I could be wrong, but um. I think, I think there would be some resiliency there.
That, that, the only, the only other thing like if kids were coming in for doing research on a Sunday, doing homework or something like that. Memorial Day to Labor Day, schools out and.
And, and I would say the other side of that is that there are many hours of the day. In the last four months, three to four months, where that youth services desk has not been stacked. And it's not just lunch thirty minutes. It's evenings, sometimes it's the whole evening. And so to me, that's a safety issue. To me, that's a service issue. The building might be open for them to do the research, but do we have the staff who are knowledgeable and trained and available to help them?
So to that point, I'd like to um, offer a few comments. I asked Renee to ask the staff. To. Come to today's meeting and communicate, you know, whether it's in writing or a statement now about. Kind of staffing and traffic, et cetera. And Renee just, just mentioned that, you know, we're going to hear a little bit more about. In twenty seventeen, the library did close at six o'clock on Mondays and Wednesdays. So I'd like to turn it over to whomever Katie or Martha would like to go first.
I think Jenny wants to say something too.
Jenny. I think you're muted, Jenny.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Um, I thank you so much for letting me speak. Um, I just wanted to say before the staff um, shared their stories, I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for coming forward. Um, and giving us, I think this helps give us context and background to the decisions. I know these are very difficult decisions that um, the staff and the board have been having to make. So I'm really grateful that they're coming forward and I really love, I want to say thank you to the board. And to Renee for really creating an open environment where the staff and the trustees that we can, we can talk more. And get a better sense of what, um, especially the staff's experience has been at the library. I don't think that's always been the case. Um, so I'm really grateful to that. And just a note in regards to, from our H R committee. I just wanted everyone to keep in mind that um, many H R matters are confidential. Um, so we are at a public meeting. Any questions that we might have about processes or something that we might want to discuss later? I'd ask that we either discuss those in a closed session or we can um, talk with Renee maybe at a later date. Thank you, that was all.
Thanks. Reminder. Alright, Katie or. So our statements, um, they do talk about the staffing levels, but. More than that, this is a reflection of the culture of the library that we have experienced in terms of. Not only staffing levels, workloads, um, but pay as well. So this is a broader look at a lot of the topics that we've, uh, that you guys have talked about so far. Do the Lake Bluff Library trustees. I was told two things when I was hired four and a half years ago, that the library was a small but mighty organization. And the library's greatest asset was its staff. This was meant to instill a sense of pride that we could offer services that were just as good, if not better, than our larger, better funded library neighbors. But in practice, it became a justification to hire a minimum number of people at a minimum salary. And expect everyone to take on more work indefinitely, more desk shifts, more passport appointments, more operating hours. But if staff pushed back against the low pay or the increasingly unmanageable workload. Or even asked for something as rudimentary as replacing the broken furniture and malfunctioning computers in the back office. Then the library was suddenly much more small and mighty and our requests were treated as a pipe dream at best. And a budgetary inconvenience at worst. We were the library's greatest asset, but we wouldn't be paid or supported in accordance with the quality of our work. Meanwhile, staff have said that the teenagers and their families make more per hour babysitting than what we pay here. And I have seen listings for managerial positions at nearby libraries where the starting salary is twenty thousand dollars more per year. Than what I currently make after nearly five years in my role. However, none of this has been a surprise to me, as it's been well recognized amongst all levels of the organization. That our employees have consistently been some of the lowest paid library staff in the area for years. On the subject of staffing, the library has been open for its full pre-COVID hours since September of twenty twenty one. Between June and September of that year, we lost four employees and three in September alone, which equated to a fifth of our entire staff. When we opened again on Sundays, our schedule collapsed almost immediately. The managers expressed deep concerns that we didn't have enough staff to be open seven days a week. But we were told in no uncertain terms that producing hours was not an option, so we pushed on. It wasn't until last month, when Renee compared our operating hours and staffing levels to the Glencoe Public Library. That we were finally able to quantify what staff had been experiencing. Glencoe is open sixty nine hours each week and has approximately twenty seven full-time equivalent staff. While Lake Bluff is open sixty three hours, just six hours less, and we have twelve and a half full-time equivalent staff on a good day. Seeing those numbers felt like a slap in the face. We can quibble about how exact the numbers actually are, but that level of disparity is not a miscalculation. It's proof that we've been trying to provide comparable services and operating hours as our neighboring libraries with less than half of their cumulative workforce. And it's proof that our concerns about staffing over the years were right. The tipping point for this current crisis may have originated during the pandemic, but what we're seeing. Is the result of years worth of systemic decisions to knowingly keep the library operating at full capacity. Without the means to properly staff the building or pay its employees, and our staff are paying the price. The fact that we've produced such high-quality service for so long is both a testament to the incredible talent of the people working here. As well as a testament to how deeply our staff have sacrificed their own well-being for the benefit of the library. Staff are reluctant to take time off for any reason, including illness. And finding sufficient coverage for those who do take time off is next to impossible. People say that the backlog of work they come back to after taking time off is worse than not taking time off at all. More than one person has apologized to me for missing work to tend to a family emergency. And in the last month, we faced so many scheduling gaps that I've chosen to leave the circulation desk half-staffed. Rather than ask my already overworked team to shoulder that burden. I have struggled to reconcile a lot of difficult realizations over the last year. Because I don't believe that any of the choices that led us to this point were made maliciously. And none of this is the fault of a single person or decision. There are also still parts of my job that bring me a lot of joy and I am honored to be a part of such an exceptionally hardworking and talented team. But I am also profoundly angry, angry at how long our staff have been exploited by an organization that has claimed to value them. And angry at how long we believe that we shouldn't expect or deserve anything more. The current board is not responsible for this crisis, but it has some important choices to make. If the organization truly values its staff, then it needs to show us by laying the groundwork for fundamental staffing and budgetary changes now. Not in a few months, not next fiscal year, now. I know that these changes will be difficult and they won't provide an overnight solution, but they need to happen. The status quo is no longer feasible and after everything that they have given over the years, our staff deserves so much better. I hope that the board will prioritize us when it comes time to decide on the future of this library.
Thank you. Thank you.
Strong statement, unfiltered.
Yes. But all true, everyone. Thank you.
Can you, can you go back to the, the statement about the hours change, the staff not replaced, et cetera?
Uh huh.
Can you, can you just recap? Yes, um, so during COVID, we had, um. We had a lot of hour changes depending on. What the, that all of the different, different information that was coming to us, what our neighboring libraries were doing. And we were slowly working our way back up to what we wanted to be the full uh, operating hours. Um, and at the time, I can't remember exactly what our hours had been. Prior to that summer, they weren't full hours. Um, but we went through the summer with our.
Summer of twenty twenty.
It's, this would be summer of twenty twenty one. That was summer of twenty twenty, there were long periods of time the building was not open to the public at all. Twenty twenty one, we started to build back our hours. Um, by the time we reached, I want to say, it would probably would have been around Memorial Day. We were mostly back up to where we were, but we were closed on Sundays because of the summer and we, and the idea was we would. Um, that we would reopen to Sundays um, after Labor Day like we usually did. Um, we lost one staff member towards the beginning of the summer. Um, one thing I did not mention was that this staff member had been. Responsible for providing an enormous percentage of our emergency coverage. They were our go-to person whenever someone was on vacation, was sick. Um, they worked weekends and evenings, all of the least desirable hours. And um, and then that person left. Um, so that right there was a blow. And then we lost uh, three staff members in the span of a month in September. Um, that all uh, resigned within, you know.
None of those four roles were backfilled?
They were.
Okay.
Some of it, not all of them were. Um, but we were, um. Yeah, one of the, the, one of the roles was a full-time staff member. Um, that role specifically was not filled by choice. Um, and the other ones were filled, but we, they were filled with peo- with new employees. And did not have the flexibility that that previous staff person had given us. Um, but there wasn't a change made to our schedule at that time to reflect that. It was just. We're not closing Sundays. Um, the first time I think someone had to call in sick those first few weeks. Um, it was, it, it was just chaos trying to find someone to keep the building open. For that Sunday and we didn't have any kind of a safety net. Um, and from that point forward, we've never really bounced back. We've had people out for extended periods of time. We've had high turnover for some of these roles. Um. So, yeah, where that's kind of a, kind of a culmination at that point.
Thank you.
Margaret, you want to read it? You want Renee to read it? You want me to read your statement? Great. Margaret, you've been at the library how long?
Uh, next year will be my twenty.
Next year will be my twentieth year, and that's actually my first sentence. Be unfiltered. Next year will be my twentieth year working at Lake Bluff Library and my tenth year as the Adult Services Manager. This is also at least the fourth staffing crisis that I can recall in the last ten years. And today, I'd like to offer the board the perspective of an employee who's been through this several times before. When I was promoted, the Adult Services and Circulation Departments were a single department that comprised approximately half of the staff. This is not standard practice in most libraries because the workflow differences between these departments are so vast. Before she left, my predecessor warned me that this structure needed to be reevaluated because the workload was unmanageable, and it had been a factor in her decision to leave. It didn't take me long to understand what she meant. At one point, I did a workload analysis and came back with between sixty-eight and ninety-eight hours of responsibilities. At the same time, I was also dealing with chronic staffing issues. I was promoted at the tail end of an approximately eighteen-month period where we had thirteen resignations on our staff of sixteen, a turnover rate of just over eighty percent of the staff. This was primarily driven by pay at all levels, but it was particularly severe because we had multiple part-time positions that were expected to do full-time professional-level librarian work in twenty-eight to twenty-nine hours a week for a starting salary of twelve dollars an hour and no health insurance. The turnover for one of these positions in Adult Services was annual for my first four years on the job. Under normal circumstances, I had to work in a way that I can only describe as library triage. At least once a year, I had to move to an elevated level of library triage to deal with turnover in that position specifically. This often included taking on the bulk of the responsibilities myself because of lack of capacity elsewhere. This was in addition to turnover in other positions on staff. And in this environment, I was still expected to find ways to do more, whether it was adding new services or expanding existing ones, despite the fact that we were often, we often barely had enough staff to remain open. I cannot tell you how many times I said this isn't sustainable. I'm concerned about the impact this is having on me, on my help, and on our staff. We need another manager. Only to be told, sorry, but we can't afford another manager. Can you manage your time differently? Or worse, Martha, the problem isn't your workload. The problem is that your expectations are simply too high for such a small library. It's difficult to describe how demoralizing this could be. I was severely overworked. I didn't have the tools, the time, or the staff to do the work that I had been assigned. I was simply expected to work three times as hard to make up the difference. When I asked for help, I was often made to feel like I was being unreasonable for expecting the library to scope my job appropriately, provide me with tools to do my work, and set reasonable expectations. Despite being told that my work was excellent and that the library was invested in retaining me, the pay for my management job lagged behind the starting salaries for entry-level, non-managerial librarian jobs at neighboring libraries for my first several years in the position. You might be thinking, well, that was twenty fourteen. We have circulation manager now. Those problems are solved. And that brings me to the crux of my statement. The same operational practices that created that work environment for me ten years ago still exist today, and they have been the root cause of every staffing crisis that I have experienced at this library and likely the ones that came before me. I can sum it up like this. The library expects staff to meet the same high standards as other North Shore libraries, but then claims that it's too small to compete with the same North Shore libraries on pay and staffing. This sends staff a very clear message about how we are valued. Because the library is never too small to ask for big outcomes, but always too small to invest in the people who are instrumental in delivering those outcomes. If you take anything from what I've said tonight, I hope it's this. I have fought incredibly hard to make things better because I want to work here. I love this library. I love the community, and I love the work that I get to do. And I am not unique on staff. We all want to be here. We all want to give the community the library that it deserves, but we can't do that if our work is constantly undervalued and preempted by the impact of an operating model that we know is not sustainable. We can't do that if the library continues to waste time and talent fixing problems that would be avoided entirely with proper operational support. And we certainly can't do that if the library continues to treat chronic burnout, uncompetitive pay, and understaffing as an acceptable cost of doing business. We need to do better. And the reality is that if we don't make changes, I can guarantee you that this is going to happen again. I think I can confidently say that no one in this room wants that. We need a better path forward. Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I could say a few things as well. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, so ironically, my workload recently has been such that I haven't had the opportunity to spend any time crafting a statement. So this is a little bit less prepared than Katie and Martha's statements, but I want to say that I support the statements made by Katie and Martha. They are accurate for me as well. And they have accurately represented the staffing issues that we have faced as a library. I have hired ten times for youth services in six years since becoming the Youth Services Manager, not including smaller part-time positions such as shelters and summer reading club seasonal staffing. If we staffed at the levels that Glencoe staffs at, we would have an operating, we would have operating hours of thirty-eight hours per week. And when I have posted youth services positions, I have had local parents express their interest to me. When they've asked for the hourly pay for those positions, they have laughed out loud and said, I could work at Whole Foods for more than that. And that is true. Thank you.
Thanks, Eliza. Okay.
I think Bill has a question.
Well, I mean, you know, in the twenties, can you remember what the FTD was? Can you remember it being?
It's never, I want to say the lowest I remember it being was nine. I think in twenty eleven, before we renovated, we had twelve people total. It was, that was in the FTD. But it's always been very low.
So it's been in that range?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we've seen some visit data to help inform this discussion around piloting different set of weekly hours. We've heard from the staff about the impact of having, being open more hours than people actually have hours to give. Again, absence has happened. People get sick unexpectedly. They take the reading, they want to take vacation. We all do. So we're here tonight. On the agenda is, if there's, first before we, I guess, is there any further discussion?
Just again, I know it needs three weeks, a little over three weeks of data, but even on the fifty hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays that we have till nine o'clock, when we look at this key map, after seven o'clock, you've got two people.
You're right, Bill.
I mean, do you even want to look at that nine o'clock timeframe as, you know, what you, how many people use it? There, you've got another four hours. I mean.
Yeah, so I, we had this exact conversation at the manager level because I had a more dramatic change than this proposed hours, and the management team suggested putting hours back in. And the reason being is because of programming. So we haven't had really much of any programming in the last four weeks, but in order to host an adult program at a time that works for adults, it's seven PM. Program's usually an hour. And so we talked about the feasibility of closing at eight when a program's at seven to eight and the need of the library from after that programming. And so this was a compromise we made together to present. But you're absolutely right. The data shows that we could potentially remove another evening. But that's not what the proposal that we agreed on includes because, first of all, we know that there are services we can provide through the evening that people are not available for during the day, passports, notaries, let alone programming. So there is a benefit to having public library hours in the evening. And so this was our collaborative discussion and decision to present something that addresses all those needs. I really appreciate you noticing that.
It would also be interesting to see if you only have two hours and meet that or later, that you might see more people.
Because how many, I know you cancel programs, but how many programs would you typically have? If you, if you.
The, the word typical is an interesting word to include because since I've been here, the management team can attest to this. I've said no more than maybe they would like to hear about doing programming and doing more. I've been trying to work at adjusting workload and programming. We're not doing programming just for the sake of programming. We're addressing people's needs, what they're interested in, how many people are coming to these programs. We need to evaluate every program that we're doing. And so even with the adult programming manager or adult programming librarian, for example, they have reduced programs since January, not an exorbitant amount, but just across a quarter to better set their own workload and also still meet the needs of the community. So since I'm still within my first year, I, I don't even know if I could honestly answer that effectively, but I, we need to be able to have some level of understanding of what effective means and coming into this job, we haven't measured before. Like, what is success?
So I would, I, I am, I am a, I, I read the newsletter when it comes out, even before I turn the board. Look for programs interested. I would say the number of programs for adults was anywhere from ten to fifteen.
And Martha oversees the program. A person, I'm sure she has numbers.
Yeah, and that might cover six weeks because the newsletters come out every two, three years. So, and then I don't know about story hours and things like that, but then the teen section and then the kids section sort of, you know, I would say adult and, and the younger children seem to have similar numbers, whereas the teen was some, what, maybe like half? The number of programs offered to adults or children. It's, it's, but it, I will say this, it, it's a lot. It's a lot. Some are only virtual, like the Illinois Libraries Presents, right, so it's a consortium of libraries.
Which is really efficient because it does require staff.
Oh, yeah, it's super, it's super. So that, that, that would be my end of one for the last five years. So, so, you know, this is the proposal. We'd like to take a vote tonight so that we can give the community advance notice of this pilot or any change in the hours. And again, I, I appreciate the fact that this is the collective best thinking of the staff based on, you know, I'm sure Katie and Martha and Eliza have, have worked a Sunday or two in the winter. Three or four.
Yeah.
You know, so we can, we can like to, I'm, I'm open to a motion to vote on the proposed weekly hours of operation of fifty-two. Or, and if that fails, we can talk about alternatives. What's been proposed? And if that fails again, then we'll see what happens there.
The only question I have is this is, this is pilot. Maybe I missed this, but one more this degree that I'm waiting.
And so that is part of what we need to decide. And so I think the natural, at least for communications purposes, the natural thought for me is three months, giving us time to, if we need to make changes in the newsletter, we're lining up with the communication timeframe. And we could always assess at that point, maybe we determine that's not long enough to really get clear data because traffic in building is different summer versus winter. It's very different, very different. And I think the impact of the change, while of course I support it as this is proposed, the impact will be felt more over the summer than right now because people come to the library in kind of different patterns. And a lot of people come to the library more during the summer than during the school year. There are obviously different patterns. But, you know, what I might suggest is either three or six months, we come back with a lot more data, staff feedback, patron feedback, because this change impacts both groups. So that would be some of my initial thoughts.
Well, if there are no other comments, I would like to move that we approve the new pilot hours of operation delineated by Renee to change our weekly hours of operation to from sixty-three to fifty-two, including closing on Sundays and reducing evenings to only two evenings a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. I propose that we start this as of January first, twenty twenty-four, and continue the pilot program for a period of six months.
Thank you, Janie. Thank you. Very, very thorough and specific motion on the floor. Like a pro. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Freedom, and we will move to a vote.
Trustee Shaw?
We're doing a roll call, Bill. We can, right? We should. I think I'm happy to do so.
I think the community would appreciate that.
Trustee Shaw, Booth, I.
Trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Daddy or Trustee Hey?
I.
Trustee Freeman, I.
Okay. If I may, thank you very much. I really appreciate this. I appreciate your trust in my leadership. And I hope that I, I hope I continue to demonstrate an assurance that the culture of the library for staff is supported, and also we put community needs first. That continues to be at the center of my work. And also, if we don't have staff to serve the community, they go hand in hand. And so your decision tonight is a very loud message to our staff that says we support you, and I am so grateful. I know I speak for other people here and not here for that. And I look forward to giving you so much more data.
Like this?
Yes. I do love this heat map. So thanks. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Look at the two, the two evenings. You, you continue to see data where, and you don't have evening programs.
Well, we will. We will. And this is only about four months or four weeks, excuse me. So I'll be able to see that average and how that expands out.
And we'll have from October twelfth, when this technology was installed through the end of December, to say, here's the total traffic on our original, you know, our standard hours, if you will.
Yeah.
Here's what the traffic looks like now. Reduced hours, right? So while we have this today, we'll have a longer runway of data for people to say.
Right. Thank you again.
All right, cool. Wow. Um, so, so we, many of you will remember October of twenty twenty-two, when we had a computer use policy violation from a patron in the building. That patron was suspended indefinitely with a one-year review by the board. That letter from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, I did consult with our new legal counsel. You may remember we had different legal counsel a year ago and just said, hey, we're Um, and just said, hey, we're, this is. Hey, this anniversary is happening. Um. What, what guidance do you have for us? And they said. If the violation was egregious. You may want as a board to continue. With the suspension. And in my opinion. My recommendation to the board is that we renew the um. Suspension for an additional year. Um, this individual is not located in our district, does not pay taxes for the Lake Love Library. Um, and so. That's all I have to say on that.
I would agree with that and would like to also note that the policy committee has been working on and that since we are heading a computer use. Policy that is not yet finalized, but will be brought to the board this future likely. And since we don't yet have. Something in place, um, I would agree with the, the extending the suspension and um, something for us to consider before we reach the board. Um, to make sure that the policy is comprehensive.
Okay, yes. Um, so a cou- a couple of things, the, so there was a special topics committee that met to handle this issue and included a community member. We have a draft report from the previous chair. Um, Renee and I together are going to make a final report and then the special spots that we need to improve that for this incident. Um, I think another thing is that my hope is in the next year. We may have security cameras in place. Should an instance like this ever happen again. Um, our staffing levels will be high potentially through the past days. Um, also to be able to fully, you know, prevent. You may change the location of laptops and then a number of other things.
New furniture potentially as well.
Yeah, new furniture could also um. Kind of just improve the staff's ability to monitor. Any violations to our, probably in general, for computer user otherwise. Um, so just a bit more on that.
And on page, uh, the section seventeen, what you have is a draft letter. Of which I could mail as early as tomorrow to follow up with this uh, patron. Um, depending on the outcome of the discussion in the vote. So that's why it's a stretch.
Right, so the original letters is number sixteen up in the top corner, then the draft here with seventeen. Uh, any further comments?
I think just the fact also that this was a very documented incident in terms of wanting to categorize this as an egregious. Offense. Warrants aligned.
I would agree with it.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we've talked about what there you could use your conduct policy and the difference between a teenager who. Uses language that might be considered offense and needs three reminders. It's a very different. Nature.
So I'm up into a motion. I will move that we. Continue the suspension for a period of more year. To be reviewed. Okay. Okay. Thank you, trustee Church, motion to. Extend suspension for this individual for another twelve month time period.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Is there a way to in this draft add in uh, with consultation with legal counsel as well?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. That is very appropriate. Yeah, thank you for that suggestion.
I'll second Jenny's.
Thank you. Um, both voice vote, all those in favor, I.
I.
All those.
I.
Any extensions? Okay, cool. That's two down.
Thank you.
Losing, I keep losing my page in the agenda. Good. Being service contract.
Well, this has been several months in the works, um, and it's gone to finance committee for discussion at several points. Um, I've talked to a few of you about um, very unfortunate experiences I've had with people that. Have either quoted us or provided us with um. Detail cleaning in the hopes that they would be a bidder for this contract. Um, what you have in front of you today is a contract. Of a company that did their first cleaning last night. Um, so I have actual observational data and can attest to their. Most excellent um, work. Um, as I kept looking for companies to work with or getting bids. Um, every one that I found was that the, the cost of the service was exceptionally higher. Than we were paying our existing vendor. The issues we were having with our existing vendor um, continued on regardless of how many times I would talk to them and provide feedback. They increased costs just last year. And even the other companies said we can't compete with Crystal when it comes to cost. But I think we were getting what we were paying for. I have had multiple comments written in the comment box from patrons about the clemminess of our building. Um, staff have reported issues. I have had many conversations with this company. That are, are current company, but they are no longer. Um. I'm also happy to report and will share more information with the finance committee on Thursday when they see my first draft of the budget. That we have made some significant cuts within our existing budget. That is appropriate. That management has supported and I'm confident in our existing budget, we can find the room to make. Make it happen for us to use this existing, we use complete cleaning as our vendor. Um, when I was comparing the final two. Complete cleaning versus all pro resources, that's what the finance committee reviewed at a recent meeting. Um, the numbers were almost identical. The reason complete cleaning won, in my opinion. My confidence is they gave us a, a free detailed cleaning service. Um, and because of our unfortunate experience. With another company where I got a best, I got a detailed cleaning service and it was not a detailed cleaning service. I was essentially needing it again and the fact that I don't have to pay for it again. They're giving this free really won my confidence. Um. And uh, like I said last night, they were here for the first time. I was here this morning at seven for the HVAC work. Um, I walked through the entire building, um, and I had a couple test locations where I was testing them to see if they got it. I'm very thorough. I think you know this about me. Cobwebs.
I know, I, I will do that.
I think that again, like we present ourselves to the community.
Yeah.
And so this is the proposal I have for you. It is a significant mu- more money. I'm confident that the cuts that we've made internally. Um, will absorb the cost. Um, and so with that, I. Present this proposal to the board.
Did uh, you said former company.
So Crystal was our former company charging about seven hundred dollars a month.
And they um.
And I, I, I ended that contract.
Sorry, I made me up.
No, you're fine, you're fine. And then I had three other companies that I bitted or that I got bids for. One of them was approximately one thousand dollars a month. That was the company that I had do the detail cleaning and I had an awful experience with. And then, so the two remaining. Work at public libraries, renowned public libraries, you know, other North Shore libraries, and they have much bigger teams. Um, I'll share briefly that I have stories from both best quality and crystal about the other companies stealing their products. So the ethics is really important to me when I enter into a contract or want to work with a vendor. I was shocked to hear about this. Um, but as they, all four vendors talk to me about it, it is not a co- is not an industry where the profit margins are big. Um, and so, I mean, I can't admit there are many of those anyway, but. So here's what I present to you. I'm confident that the current budget with our cuts, we will be able to absorb the cost. And we'll have a really clean.
You were with a particular appliance.
So the um, the windows, the cobwebs, the vents, um, surfaces. Uh, and then my favorite, not getting all of the trash receptacles taken out. We would have a regular um, occurrence of several trash bins being missed.
Clearly by offering us a initial detailed. That no charge, they want the business and they've proven they are able to do a good job.
All right, so open to other questions?
It's like it's a eighteen month initial contract then?
Yes.
And then on the next year, year of year.
I believe it's eighteen. Here's the close one.
And then if nothing's done, then it would just go.
Oh, where are you reading eighteen?
In the service agreement, I think it says twelve.
Twelve months, yeah, thank you, Bonnie.
Uh, item three under service agreement says for, for a period of twelve months.
Which frankly, as a new company.
Sorry, I'm reading. The restriction that you.
I wouldn't want it any longer than that, especially because they are new. If we experience really good quality, then. I would sign for something longer. Thank you.
So eighteen months is not hiring someone from the company for a in-house being a real position for at least.
Uh, open to a motion to the. Not when we move that we accept the service agreement with. Complete cleaning company in Portland. Okay, one second. Uh, it's money, full vote, roll call.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi, trustee Church.
I.
Trustee Graziano.
I.
Trustee Daddy.
I.
Trustee Haze.
I.
Trustee Freedom, I.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
I think we probably have about fifteen minutes.
See you Thursday. Um, we do, of course.
Yeah. Um, we are at the item D, the twenty twenty-four Lake Love. Public libraries board trustee meeting dates shown on the topic of page nineteen. Number nineteen up here. Item number nineteen, match number nineteen. So second Tuesday of the month with the exception of, well, within. Maybe the inclusion of November, no. Sorry, I'm rushing, it's late, and I'm rushing. Third Tuesday in the month, seven P M. Uh, November nineteenth, it's noted here, Thanksgiving and November twenty-eighth, so it's. You know, not the week of Thanksgiving, the one on this, on this proposed schedule. And then the um. December meeting would be on the seventeenth, which is the second Tuesday. Was that the second Tuesday?
No, it's not very Tuesday.
Yeah.
So it'd be the tenth.
I know, I think it would stay the seventeenth.
That, yeah, so the proposed date is on the second Tuesday of the month, the third Tuesday is Christmas Eve and the library will be closed.
But the seventeenth is the date that's been proposed.
So.
It's gotta be the third Tuesday.
Yeah, then it is.
But regardless, it's.
Fourth Tuesday.
But if it were one, it moved four days later.
Yeah.
If the first Monday, yes, then.
So just cross off number two.
Yeah.
Seventeenth is already.
Any other, any other questions, comments? A motion to approve. Thank you, trustee Freedom.
I'll say.
God pays has his seconds. All those in favor?
I.
I. Thanks Jenny, we got you. Post. Sustained. Okay.
Ooh, that's item D. Item E, we shifted staff appreciation proposal.
Yes, um, okay, I will go as quickly as possible. Um, I am proposing, um, it is not an action required.
Yes. I have all my.
But a proposal for employee or staff appreciation opportunity from the board, um. All right. So there was discussion, I believe, before Sandy and I joined the board this year about uh, adopting a staff appreciation effort from. The board of trustees, uh, and there was some hesitancy given that there were new board members coming on and not wanting uh, new board members feel. Like maybe not on board with this idea. I'm speaking from a place of not being there, so I may be wrong, so I'm. Distracted if I am. Um, but in talking with the HR committee, I attended the meeting in October. And just generally looking and speaking with Renee about. All the things our library and librarians do, um, much beyond the job description we might think of as a librarian, we're talking about, you know. Responding to the public, which is unpredictable and high demand and that could get you from a medical emergency to. Be frontline for folks who might need a place to go. Um, and we also know that they deal with. My mental health situations in communities, um, especially in the past few years. Uh, so I am bringing it to the board as uh, more of a proposal to opt in to a library trustee recognition fund for employees. Uh, this would be a voluntary donation that can be made to the Lake Love Library and would be used at the discretion of the library director. Uh, so this would be like using funds for food and beverages, for events, uh, for the library and service days, things like that. Um, there would be a budget line created in the accounting system that would be under grants and gift funds. And if a board member chooses to participate, they can do so anonymously or chooses not to participate. It's done anonymously. Um, donations can be provided directly to Renee. They will not be compulsory. Um, but it would be something that Renee would share her plans with how to use those funds uh, with the board in advance without naming. The participants. Um, so I'd like to propose this for consideration for each trustee. Um, and if it is something that you would like to participate in, I'm happy to talk more about some of the discussion we had in the HR committee meeting. Uh, but really we are hoping to. I kind of phrase it as like there's small, there's sort of those small things, right? There's like the cup of coffee, there's doughnuts in the morning, things like that. And then there's also the long-term retention and investment efforts, which are things like. We heard tonight from library staff members. So while this way may not address those things, um. It is still a small token of appreciation, um, that goes hand in hand with other greater, deeper and more long-term retention appreciation efforts. Um, if you'd like to participate. Renee will be your point of contact. Um, again, not compulsory, uh, but there is a suggested donation of an annual hundred dollars. Um, but any donation is appreciated. Okay.
Thanks, Hallie. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the staff for even considering the proposal, HR committee and Ally for putting it forth.
And also we'll say I talked to Sandy about this as the other report. She was actually ready to present this, so. And she's.
She's sorry, she couldn't come.
All right.
Um, Renee and um, Bonnie.
Yeah.
In regards to, um, I just wanted to, in, since we're in new business, I just wanted to bring up one thing. Um, last year, uh, the board helped to organize a dinner for staff. To celebrate the holidays. And I wondered when we would be a good time to talk about how that would look this year? If we would discuss it at the next HR meeting, I just worried that we're getting close to the holidays, so I didn't know when we needed to set a date for that.
Um, Jenny, can you? Remind us again, what was the um, kind of end of calendar year holiday event?
Oh, sure. Um, well, we were really lucky. Janie was the person that pulled all of it together for us. So we did a pizza dinner. For staff.
It was like a Friday for me, just pizza delivered right when the library officially closed kind of thing, okay? Unfortunately, it was a not a great weather night.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh.
I think stat illness has contributed to the low.
Yeah, yeah. And uh, so it's not as well attended and um. And uh, so it's not as well attended and um prior to that, we would always have a lunch. Um, and we'd have, you know, we'd be down here from, you know, we'd be down in the schoolroom from like eleven thirty to one or something like that. And people could come down when they had their lunch break and we would have the lunch. Um. But I, I, it is getting late because usually we would uh be doing that the first week or two in December. And um, I'm just starting to wonder, uh, I don't know if this has been brought up or the staff, if there's any.
I brought it, I brought it up with Jenny bec- as head of H R, just as a not expecting anything, just this is what we did last year. If this is something the board would like to consider again.
I would love to consider doing something. I just am wondering if maybe sometime in January might be a better time to do it because, you know, have it be um a, a, um.
A new year celebration?
A new year's celebration, a cabin fever party, a what have you, you know? Um, it might the, the holidays just get so crammed with
Hmm.
Yeah.
Things going on that I think it's, it's uh difficult.
And the H R meeting
It's Friday.
Is Fridays and the first one in, I don't know if it's been calendared for January yet, but I think it would be Friday, January fifth.
Well, and could we maybe put it on our agenda for our December meeting so we could present it to the board in December for the January date for the staff? Would that work?
Another option is the H R committee could move forward with a decision and I could contact the board via email.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Board can attend if available.
Yeah. And it's like, is lunch what library staff would, you know, scheduling, why all those things? I don't know if there's considered.
There was a comment about the idea of coming to something outside of library hours and the feeling of like, well, is this paid? Is this not?
Yeah.
Um, so you know, I think returning to a lunch seems appropriate and then local people could come in lunch if they wanted. Um, because we do have almost half of our staff working like bluff, so um I, I think, what do you think? Yeah.
I mean, we're very motivated, but.
So we're very soon motivated, she says. Yes. I mean, I, again, thank you, honestly, anything that the board would consider. I know staff would appreciate. Um, it's a really wonderful gesture.
So do you think we can pencil in January fifth?
Sure.
And that would be an H R committee meeting at two o'clock anyway.
So the lunch will be January.
The lunch would be January fifth. Staff appreciation lunch. And then any board members who could make it, of course, would be welcome to join the lunch and or the H R committee meeting. Anyway.
Maybe.
Don't.
Bit hand, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong year. I'm in twenty twenty five.
Thanks Jenny.
Thank you.
All right, we're at correspondence.
Well, the first one I want to highlight, I believe is, what number is it? Um, twenty. Um, is the one negative comment that was received. Um, Bonnie and I discussed this letter. Um, Regis and um uh Charlotte, our village president, uh board president, received a copy of this as well. I spoke to uh Drew about it and his receipt of it. Um, I spoke to them about what they do when they receive similar messages with um no return address. Um, and so uh noted is what I was told and um they also know that uh the library is a place of um freedom to access and that the role of public libraries is to support parents right to make those decisions for their children. We had those discussions, Drew and I. Um, and so I wanted to, you know, share this correspondence with the community to provide transparency about this feedback. Um, and I just wanted to share that. Any questions about this? This, oh, sorry. The second number of the second correspondence I want to share is number twenty-one. And this is anticipating next year's budget. Um, that we've had multiple requests to join our local consortium CCS. We, you may remember, we resigned our contract with Sierra, our I L S company for three years with the intention of pricing out what it would cost to join a consortium like CCS. And so I just wanted to provide you this community feedback that um directly from someone who wrote it, uh, that there's interest in um us joining. What this would do is increase access to materials in our catalog. It would improve the um and reduce the amount of time that we would get materials from other libraries. Um, and in general, it would allow um people to place holds on books that we don't own. We are a small library with a finite collection, finite amount of space to house that collection. And this would expand im- immensely access for our residents. Um, now they can already go and use their library cards at other libraries. But what this does is it allows that request um process to happen and it happens automatically. And there are vans that go around to the CCS libraries and bring those materials to us. Um, I think I've heard from the management team, this is a huge piece of, um, this is a huge project that they would, we would like to undertake for the community. But I just wanted to share this right now, even though that's far ahead in planning, um, uh, that their, our community knows about CCS. They understand the advantages and um I think it will come back.
So you'd have to do that on the website, then.
Yeah, so like our online catalog, when you click on a book, you'll be able to see our location and how many copies we have. And you can see all the other libraries' library locations.
That's fit, so physical copies. Cause I know now like the.
We do have a digital consortium.
A Kindle. Yeah, so like that, so this is hard copy material.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And we already do exist in what is called the digital library of Illinois. Uh, it's digital, yes. And so we share digital materials, but this would be print, physical copies.
I thought we already shared physical print copies.
So we interlibrary loan.
Yes.
And, and that is a separate process that requires records to be created. It, we have staff who manage interlibrary loan for our library to send materials out and then to accept them in. Anytime we request a book from another library, that's technically interlibrary loan because we're standalone library. But being a part of a consortium, you're essentially sharing all of the collections together. And so all of that processing internally that Morons and other people have to do as part of their job, it's not required. The benefit also too is that there's sha- shared cataloging. So um, the idea that we could have, you know, optimized records that are optimized for searching, shared um, and, and provide feedback about how those records are cataloged. A lot of our materials are processed pre-processed before we um get them in building because we only have a part-time library and cataloger. And so to be able to potentially adjust that work scope to support other collection needs that are here at the library. Um, as opposed to having to copy catalog and, and create the records every single time. Um, there are a lot of benefits too.
So essentially this, this streamlines the process and it opens up more of what's available in the area libraries.
Yes, very much.
How does the digital side of things like if um, like if I go, you know, I'll do books.
Yeah. Yeah.
But um, I'll order, I'll put a book in. Sometimes a book is ready available. Sometimes it will say, okay, it's eleven weeks old or ten weeks old. I remember sometimes uh someone will look at that and then, okay, let's get another copy in because it's popular or whatever. Is there, is there anything that would speed that up?
I would love to have Martha address that.
Yeah.
Cause she is the one managing our electronic uh collections or digital collections right now.
Um, so there in our, our overdrive collection, um, there are titles that are owned by the consortium, which is a group of about a hundred, I think, libraries in Illinois. Um, there are books at the consortium homes and then there are books that we own that are only available for Lake Bluff patrons. So that will allow you to jump the line.
Oh.
Um, really the main obstacle with that is cost because uh, I mean, I, I was, I just placed an order recently and it was like thirty books for fourteen hundred dollars. Um, it is, they could be like sixty dollars per title.
Um, and we supplement our digital collection with our per capita grant. Our current operating budget does not suffice to address the demands for our ebook collection. So that's why we use our cap, per capita grant dollars primarily on ebooks.
Are you like rare out of print books?
Is that the thing?
That's amazing.
Is that it's like?
The publishing.
Those publishers are. I could do a whole separate rant about that.
All right. No, cause, cause sometimes it will say, go weeks and then next thing.
You get it.
Again, yeah. Yeah.
I'm not ready.
And yeah, I'm not. Same thing. I go, okay, seven days.
Yeah. I think yourself will be more prepared.
Well.
Yeah. But it's, it's my understanding that today, while patrons don't have visibility to supply, if you will, at other libraries for a particular title. Our, like, the librarians at the, the desk, if you say, you know, I'd like to get this book, can you help me find it? They'll, they do have visibility to, okay, Antioch has it and uh Park Ridge has it and okay, it looks like we can get the one from Park Ridge in about five days. We'll email you, text you, whatever, smoke signals and let you know when it's here. So.
And that is what's called interlibrary loan currently.
And it would be faster as a consortium member.
Right, because you, interlibrary loan is managed by Rails. CCS has its own staff and its own process.
And if you're part of a consortium, arguably, you're like a partial owner of that title and we did. Is that, I'm saying this, so I.
You're treated equally among the consortium in terms of requests.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for the explanation on that, honey.
Sure. And the last one, I think this is a really great way to end the correspondence. Despite everything, your staff of this library continue to receive handwritten notes of how wonderful they are and how fantastic their service is. It is rare for people to write a positive comment, but since I've been here, it's surprising how many I do actually see. And I think it is both the nature of Lake Bluff and also the excellent staff that we have. So I wanted to share with you these four comments um to see how wonderful our staff are and how much the community appreciates them. So that's all I have for correspondence.
Thank you. That takes us to any and all other business.
Jenny, this is mostly for you, but obviously any board member. Last month, you asked questions about the I G A program. And so I want to thank Katie, who's not in the room right now. She's man- managing the door. Um, she put together this report for you based on um usage and trends of usage, not only overall for the program, but individually by school. And so what you can see, and I'm just gonna really big, high level summary, is there continues to be more and more students who enroll in the I G A program year to year to year. Um, and so I think the circulation of how much they check out varies. But what I'm really pleased to see is that we are getting more and more coverage across the eligible students. They know about it more. Um, and I, and I believe I was just talking to Eliza recently about how um interactions with school staff and the cul- you know, family liaisons that work with Spanish-speaking students, they talk about the I G A program. We have a big promotional piece in our winter newsletter about it. And so um you know, thank you to Katie for putting this data together and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about it, Jenny. Or anybody.
I thought this looked great. It was, it was really nice to see the numbers and to see them going up. Thank you so much for your research.
You're most welcome. I'll pass it on to Katie.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Um, that takes us to executive session. We do have a need to go into executive session this evening. So I need a motion. Um, the topics we'll be covering. Thank you, Mar- oh, Martha, you're.
We have to turn off the.
Thank you.
Motion, um. Maybe wait till after the motion.
We'll be discussing um performance of a particular individual at the library. Um, and that is why we need to um move into executive session.
I am to need to. Propose a.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to move to executive session, trustee Freedom. Have a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.